Recording in progress.
Good morning. This is City Griffin Board of Commissioners, May 27, 2025 workshop. We're going to begin by fiscal year 2025-2026 budget presentation by City Manager Jesse O'Connor. Good morning and welcome back 12 months later.
All right. We all heard from Ms. Ward. I know, I think Ms. Murray was on a trip.
Nope.
Oh, no, she, there she is.
She made it.
All right. Okay, so then we will go ahead and get started. As usual, the 4th Tuesday in May, we are here to present the annual budget for next fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025. The budget has been advertised for the last two weeks and available in the city manager's office as well as online, the link that is associated with the agenda as well. To date, we have had no questions. So hopefully today if there are any that you have, we'll be able to get through those. For public hearing and then as well on June 10th for adoption prior to the end of this fiscal year. So as always, a huge thank you to Angela, to Deborah, to Felicia and Suzanne this year for helping put this budget together, as well as the department directors. I do feel like with one exception, the budget is pretty on par for what we had last year. The one exception that you will note throughout the budget presentation is the airport. Good news is we have about $24 million that we received in federal grants and, or state grants, actually. So that sort of inflates numbers that are hard to compare. So there's a few slides that we did just go ahead and take out that airport number so you can better see what it looks like compared to last year as well as this year. So with that, we always start with our goals, our areas of importance, because we take time to adopt those at the beginning of the year. As you can remember, hopefully, we wanted to improve our city rights of way. We also want to work on transportation improvements, addressing sub senior properties and blight. We need to implement new financial software. We're not moving anymore. All right, and we want to enhance community outreach. So with our overall expenditures this year exceed revenues by $11,489,268. This is a lot more than last year. Again, some of that is going to be related to the airport. But last year, we had $5,554,192 where our expenditures exceeded revenues. Our general fund expenditures exceed revenues every year, this year by $14,772,518, compared to last year's projected expenditures of $11,264,909 more than our revenues. Our total general fund revenue is up this year. This is without transfers. So this year, we're expecting $2,568,685 more in general fund revenue. Last year, it was up $1,6076. This year's property tax is budgeted at $4,700,000 compared to $4,600,000 last year. Our general fund revenue already to date at 75% of the year is at 102.87. So we're well above what we expected this time last year. So the real and personal property tax budgeted increased to $100,000. However, our motor vehicle tax and our TAVT tax has decreased by $17,000 as of today. Or at 75% of the fiscal year, we're at 73.95%. So we're a little bit off there. So we budgeted $725,000 for this fiscal year compared to $742,000 for last fiscal year. Lost revenue has also expected to increase by $100,000. So that is at $5.65 million this year compared to $5.55 million last year. We're at 76.38% collection at 75% of the year. Our enterprise funds revenues, most of those have increased as well. So electric is expected to increase $700,807. Waste water projections are increasing $1,962,140. Water has decreased at $239,980. Most of that is related to delinquent penalties. We're not going to be actually splitting those up between the utilities. So they will remain in the electric fund. So their revenue is actually not down. It just looks that way because of delinquent penalties in the past. Stormwater revenues have increased $215,292. Solid waste is expected to increase $399,006. Telecom has a slight increase of $41,898. And the golf course revenues are projected to increase at $132,324. So looking at all of this, we are pretty much comparing this fiscal year to next fiscal year with the projections at 75% of the year. Solid waste is at 74.01%. Electric is at 77.15%. Water wastewater combined is at 76.87%. Stormwater is at 76.1%. Telecom is already at 95.95% of projected revenue. And then the golf course is at 81.26% at 75% of the year. So most of those are pretty on track. The ones that we are expecting a little bit of a bump from, we have budgeted that. So our total budget for all funds, our revenues are up $30,480,214. That's 20.82%, but again, $23,733,458 of that is the airport grant. And so if you take that out, we'll show you on the next slide what that actually equates to. Our operating expenses are also up greatly, again, because of that airport grant. So $36,415,290 more than last year, so 23.96% in operating expense increase. $24,184,24 million, 184,316 of that are airport expenses. So our total projected revenue this year is a whopping $176,903,562. Our projected expenses are $188,392,830. Net of depreciation, you take out about $8 million, which makes it $180,637,930. So that is much higher than it was last year. Again, if you look at that from without the airport, you can see it a little bit better. Projected revenues are up $6,521,327, which is a 4.5% increase from original projections in fiscal year '25. Our operating expenses are up $12,230,974, which is an 8% increase in expenses from the original projections in FY '25. Any questions so far? Okay.
In regards to, one quick question. The MCI this year, what was that?
Two, 2.28%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. All right, so the other expense highlights that we always like to make sure that you notice is our capital requests. Again, skewed because of the airport, it's at $37,58,456 last year in FY '25. The capital request were $9,975,848. So that first line right there, airport, utilities and site prep, $24,184,316. The rest of it is pretty much what is expected. CDBG infrastructure is at $1,593,115. T-SLOSS is budgeted at $3,727,500. Patrol vehicles, this year we have 12 in the budget, $780,000. Improvements at Harry Simmons Water Treatment Plant are budgeted at $750,000. A bucket truck is budgeted at $355,000 and a digger derrick at $390,000. There's a wheel loader budgeted for the transfer station at $340,000. And to continue to expand our fiber network is $100,000. Our general fund capital this year is $1,793,455 compared to last year at $1,122,900. So the capital is up by over $27 million. But if you take out the airport, capital is up less than $3 million at $2,898,292. Personnel is also one of our huge expenses. Again, this year, we have budgeted a 2% increase for our pay for performance plan. That is not exactly what everybody will receive. It depends on their evaluations. There's 2% budgeted across the board for each department. And we'll determine what those percentages are based on the scores once we have all of those in before the end of this fiscal year. There is a $368,050 increase to medical insurance coverage, but the city is going to absorb that and not pass it along to the employees. Also, unfortunately, our property and casualty coverage has increased, so we're budgeting an increase of $320,924. Last year, medical insurance increased about $44,000. Property and casualty increased about $270,000. So we just continue to see those numbers rise, but that is just a nationwide trend at this point, although we are working on risk reduction every day. Other highlights for the personnel side. And general fund management services in my department is adding an executive assistant in order to keep up with open records requests and other things that are coming through our department. Fire is also going to add an emergency preparedness coordinator. This is not to be confused with the county's emergency management duties that they have as a county, but this is something to just sort of help us and coordinate on the front end rather than once an emergency hits. So that is what that position will handle. Also in fire, because we need a new station, over the next two years, we'll be adding 12 new firefighters to the organizational chart. And then because of our workload, both internally and externally, public works needs a new paving and marking technician in the sign shop. We're able to do a lot of stuff now in-house rather than having to outsource printing type services, but it is coming at a cost and we need another employee for that. So it's much cheaper to do it in-house than to continue to pay someone to do it outside. So that is what that addition is for. In our enterprise funds, the only two changes that we have. Electric, we had a tech services engineer position that has been there for a while. It has been unfunded. We haven't really needed it. But we need it now. We're expanding and we're growing and we have more jobs that we need to do. And then also in solid waste, we have what we call a swing driver position that could either work commercial or residential. That position has been unfilled for quite some time, and so we're eliminating that swing driver position. They're able to do it with current staff. Another large expense for us is fuel. What we did figure out this year, Deborah and Angela took some time to actually dive into fuel expenses by division even of departments. And we're able to compare what was budgeted versus what was actually used. So we have reduced our fuel expense. Of course, knowing sort of what to budget per gallon is a little bit difficult, but right now it is budgeted at $3.65 per gallon for regular fuel. You can see our highest that we've paid so far this year is $3.44, so we do feel like that is a safe estimate for what we may be spending next year. Diesel is at $4.20 per gallon. The highest we've paid this year is $3.84. So we feel like we have some room there just in case prices do inflate. All right, expense highlights for our general fund, and you all know my favorite part are picking out these pictures. So I enjoy getting to go through them and see what everybody's done throughout the year. And management services, we have an increase of $245,966. Your budget increased $74,078. The city manager's budget increased $162,593. That's mainly in addition to the new position. Communications and public relations increased $4,460. The staff attorney increased $10,188. The city attorney increased $147. Elections decreased $5,500 and the municipal court increased $35,841. Most of these increases that you will see throughout these funds are because of either salary and/or insurance increases, unless I have mentioned something else like the executive assistant in my office.
On the elections, has the, have we worked out an arrangement with the board of elections on a less costly? Or why is it down because we didn't have election this past year?
It's down because we have taken the information that has been provided to us in quotes and actually compared it to what we actually are charged, and it's not even close. So we are just sort of having to, I don't want to say guess, but make a better decision than what we've received in a quote. All right, some of the expenses associated with your budget is muni code at $15,000. So when we have to codify an ordinance, we send that to them to be able to show that online. Education and training is listed at $17,500. Our membership to Three Rivers Regional Commission is $25,000 annually. The Georgia Municipal Association membership is $8,600. National League of Cities membership is $2,200. The I-75 Central Corridor Coalition is budgeted at $2,000. The payment that we make to UGA Griffin for continuing ed services is $17,500. And then you all have a contingency of $100,000. From finance, their expense increased $186,449. The director's budget increased $14,359. Accounting is your largest increase at $167,723. And that is due to new accounting software, which is budgeted at $100,000. And then procurement has increased $4,368. Human resources and risk management, human resources expenses increased $73,117, while risk management expenses increased $10,887. Information technology and GIS, information technology expenses increased almost a million at $918,68. One capital purchase for our pickup truck at $35,000. Servers for disaster recovery, so if we have anything happen and need backup servers, this is $377,635. A PPDM archiver is budgeted at $110,000. That is for cellphone extractions for the police department. And then their repair and maintenance services are also up $185,283. GIS expense has increased overall $77,915. The majority of that is related to aerial imagery, so it's time to take pictures again for our property lines and queue public. That's budgeted $28,000. And then Esri training, which is our software, is budgeted at $5,615. Police, as usual, is a big expense for us. That expense is up $2,422,69. As I mentioned earlier, vehicle replacement continues to increase. It is now at $65,000 each for a patrol car and outfitting. So that total is $780,000. Last year, it was at $61,000, so it's increased another $4,000 this year. Our Axon contract includes now body cameras, dash cameras and TASER, so you are getting three services. It is at $400,000 this year. It's just a slight increase from last year at $393,000. And then inmate custody, which is our prisoner custody, is at $144,000. Last year it was $144,800. So right around the same amount that we expect from last year. Fires expenses have also increased this year at $1,321,945. They have requested a cardiac monitor for $25,000, four thermal imaging cameras for $36,000 total, a crew cab pickup for the Neo Emergency Preparedness Coordinator at $77,000, a telescoping RAM, which is for vehicle extractions, at $12,000. Turnout gear is always expensive, $56,500 this year, and then uniforms for the station are $42,000. Public works, total expenses have increased $342,981. However, the director decreased $30,988. Cemetery expenses are expected to decrease $25,812. Facilities are expected to decrease $8,868. But yet, our streets department is expected to increase $278,921. Our parks department also increased $106,350. Sign shop, mostly related to the new position, is $109,786. Our welcome center operational costs this year has actually decreased. It is now at $115,868. And our archives total budget is $179,743, which you split that equally between the city and county, so each of us would pay $89,871. When you look at the capital expenses in public works, this year it's budgeted at $232,000. Last year's was $155,800. Streets capital has $110,000. It is for a class five four-by-four pickup truck. The cemetery and parks capital is at $70,500. A zero turn mower at $15,500 and a three-quarter ton crew cab pickup truck at $55,000. The sign shop capital is expected to be $51,500. All of that associated with a half-ton pickup truck purchase. So just in comparison, streets capital last year was $120,800, so right around the same that it is this year. Development services expenses have also increased this year, a little less than half a million at $472,636. Our building inspections are still contracted out with Charles Abbott and Associates. They're at $277,900. Last year was about $20,000 more than that. Also, our CDBG application fees, we always budget it $15,000 for Alan Smith to help us with that application. The big expense for them that is not normal is our Unified Development Code review. We do need to rewrite that code, and so this will be the first phase of that. It's very expensive to do that currently. And we will be asking, we'll actually contract that out as well and have somebody help us with that. They are not requesting any capital this year. Another thing to note that the revenue associated with those inspections from Charles Abbott, so the permit fees and those kind of fees are $397,000, a little less than last year's budget at $425,000. I think that's my favorite picture in here. Transportation planning this year is budgeted at $120,000. Last year it was $85,000. Tax and licensing has increased $27,473. And then economic redevelopment, this is the property maintenance that we do for land bank and city properties, has increased pretty dramatically at $341,011. And there's a lot more of that that has to go on to keep up with what we actually expect properties to look like. So that's an increase of over $100,000 from last fiscal year. Economic development, their overall expenses have decreased $12,844. Most of that is related to historic city hall facilities. Those expenses have decreased $18,736. Their rental revenue is projected again this year, very modestly, at $20,000. Hopefully, you remember that we have had to unfortunately do some repair work to the old courtroom upstairs, taking a lot longer than we expected, and it's a little worse than we expected. So we have not been able to rent HCH since January. So at 75% of FY '25 rental revenue is at $13,400, which is 67%, but we haven't been able to do it for the last four months. So we do think $20,000 is a very reachable number for next year and hope to continue to make that a better revenue source for us. Okay, any questions about general fund expenses before we move to enterprise funds? All right. Okay, electric department, as we mentioned, their revenues have increased $703,807. Residential service is projected to decrease to $372,334, while commercial service is increasing $233,737. The industrial service remained flat, so the budget is the same as last year, 8.7 million. Our power cost adjustment and environmental compliance cost recovery fees have increased just nominally at $26,971. All system sales have decreased at $185,000. Most of that is because we don't have any excess to sell. So that's a good, good thing. And then delinquent penalties overall for the city have increased $75,000.
Jessica, what causes the residential decrease? Where does that come from?
ECG is the one that does sort of our projections for us, and so they just do it very conservatively. I also am not sure that I agree with that, but that's where it is now. We'll continue to watch it though and see if we need to do anything else with it. All right, their expenses, however, increased more than their revenues are projected to do so at $2,898,931. And FY '25, those expenses only increased $593,700, so a big jump this year. Line maintenance and improvements always budgeted at $500,000. We are going to continue with the memorial drive, street light upgrades, so continue to bring that through town. It looks really good when you drive out there at $400,000. We always have new customer construction budgeted at $300,000. The rest of the streetlights, those LED conversions for $200,000, and those that are just sort of spot checked as needed. We don't have another big plan for that $200,000. Security lighting and system protection are both budgeted at $150,000. And as I mentioned, a bucket truck at $355,000 and a digger derrick at $390,000. Again, just for comparison purposes, the bucket truck cost in FY '25 was $299,400. So a $55,000 increase in one year. That's a lot of money. Additionally, electrics capital request this year is $3,100,240 compared to last year at $1,869,703. The general fund transfer is expected to be $9,919,903. And FY '25, that transfer was projected at $10,497,615. To put that into comparison, last year, we had to use that to balance the budget, so it was at 16.04% of electrics earnings. And then this year, it's right at 15.0. So we were able to cap that at 15. Their reserved earnings for this fiscal year projected is $656,630. And FY '25, they had reserved earnings of $2,362,222. So reserving a little less this year. Also, they'll want to note that it is time to do a cost of service study, and we are not going to be doing that. We think that our rates are where they need to be at this time, and so we will not be looking at a rate increase throughout this next fiscal year. Our wastewater revenue is the big increase of $1,962,140. However, our expenses are also projected to increase $684,456. You can see the breakdown by plant. Shoal Creek expenses are up $196,110. Potato Creek is up $195,528. Cabin Creek is up $38,808. Plant Mill, which is our land application site, is down $27,632. Our lab is up $61,855. Most of that related to a capital purchase of a vehicle. Our lift station expenses are expected to increase $56,919. Our solids management, we used to call that sludge, but apparently that is not the appropriate term, so now it's called solids management, is down $38,708. And wastewater collections expenses have increased $201,577. Total capital request for wastewater this year is $393,000. Last year it was at $160,000. They've increased their cost of renewals and extensions, so that's repairing and replacing lines for $200,000. They also are requesting a mini excavator and a flail mower attachment for $150,000 total. That will help us keep outfall lines clear. The SUV for the lab, as I mentioned, is budgeted at $31,000. And an automatic entrance gate at Potato Creek for $12,000. Water revenue, as we mentioned, decreased $239,980. But if you take out the delinquent penalties that they received last year, compare their revenue from last year to what they are projected this year, would actually increase $54,039. So actual water sales and revenue from water is not decreasing, it's actually up $54,000. So residential is projected to decrease slightly, $85,053. Commercial is expected to increase $20,000. Our industrial institutional is budgeted to decrease at $34,696. This has a lot to do with one plant closing. However, there are a lot of people that are interested in that site, so we hope that that will actually end up being an increase in revenue there. Our wholesale customers have increased $74,491. That excludes Spalding County. Spalding increased $1,533,797. Some of that is rate-related, but also growth in the county. Additional water expenses, they have increased $1,625,143. They seem to flip-flop. Last year it decreased $1,686,699. Our director increased $58,265. Steel Branch has increased $455,256. The biggest increase this year is Harry Simmons at $907,188. $750,000 of that is related to a capital project. Water distribution has increased $58,261. Our meter division is projected to increase $123,341. And construction management is expected to increase $22,518. So looking at that capital, $950,000 total. The Simmons project is $750,000. You can see the breakdown. A motor control center with a starter at $300,000, high service pumps at $280,000, a pump station control panel at $50,000, and then low service pumps at $120,000. So a lot of that will go ahead and take care of some of the issues that we have at Harry Simmons. And we're glad we're able to budget that and not get another GFO loan, and I'll show you why.
Next.
Also, water line renewals and extensions totaled $200,000. So their capital last year was $234,000. Again, if you take out the Harry Simmons project, it would be right at $200,000, so in line for what they've been requesting in previous years. Their big cost is their debt service. So this year, in principal and interest, they are expected to pay $8,99,310. It's about $3,000 more than last fiscal year. Reservoir bonds are at $4,235,530. Potato Creek GFO loan is at $541,460. Cabin Creek GFO loan is at $788,800. And the Shoal Creek Treatment Plant loan is at $450,730. They also have the Flint River Pump Station GFO loans at $319,650. Steel Branch generators for $103,900. The solids facilities, there's two different loans there, so one is at $198,150. The second one is at $561,090. The dam rehabilitation, we had to do two loans there as well, unfortunately. The first one, that annual payment this year will be $745,209. And the second one is still estimated, and it is at $154,780. So if you look at their total expenses, their water capital is $950,000. Wastewater capital is $393,000 for a total of $1,343,000 in total capital. The transfer out of water wastewater is expected at $3,66,115. That's a $2,412,000 transfer to the general fund and then $654,115 to CDBG. So they are expected to reserve $1,677,836 compared to last year's $2,58,689. Stormwater, their revenue is projected to increase $215,292. However, their expense is expected to increase $326,70. The things that stormwater does these days, especially because we're able to keep a lot of stuff in-house. And I think they're fully staffed for the first time in a lot of years, which is good news, but that is... but that is causing our work to actually become more. So expenses increasing a little bit there. Total capital this year is two hundred and four thousand dollars. They have budgeted two half-time pickup trucks, fifty thousand dollars each, for a total of a hundred thousand dollars, and a compact track loader at a hundred and four thousand dollars. Their debt service payment is a hundred and ninety-five thousand one hundred and eight dollars. So unfortunately, they would not have the money to balance their budget. They would be short eighty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars, so we are asking to pull that money out of their fund balance. They do have an unrestricted fund balance of almost five million dollars. So last year they had a very small reserved earnings of five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We will be doing a deeper look into stormwater's enterprise fund to see if it's a rate situation that needs to be adjusted, or if there's something else that we need to look at to make sure that we're continuing to, to build that as an enterprise fund. And so there'll be more with that in the coming months. Solid waste revenue is projected to increase almost four hundred thousand at three hundred and ninety-nine thousand six dollars. And you can see that breakdown by division. Residential collections expected to increase sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-two. Commercial collections expected to increase seventy-eight thousand. Yard waste collections, very nominally, an increase projected of thirteen thousand six hundred and thirty. The biggest increase is in, in transfer station fees. That is projected to increase three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Roll-off fees at thirty thousand dollars, landfill fees at thirty-eight thousand dollars. And then recycling fees, we still have a total of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, that is something that we plan to bring to y'all in the very near future about how we're going to reinstitute our recycling program. If you look at the current collections, so how we're getting to these projections, at seventy-five percent of the year, residential is at seventy-five point eight four percent. Commercial is at seventy-nine point nine six percent. Yard waste revenue is at seventy-one point two four percent. Transfer station is at ninety-two point five percent. So that is why we need to bump up their, their revenue collections. Roll-off is a little low at sixty-five point eight six percent, and the landfill is right on target at seventy-five point nine three percent. Additionally, their expense is expected to decrease this year, twelve thousand sixty-six dollars. And last year they had an increase of a little over a million dollars in expenses. We think, we thought we finally had equipment, personnel, all of that figured out. However, we recently had a fire on a Doja at the landfill and also a collections sad loader. So right when we think we've got everything in order, we have something happen. And we're still not even sure yet if they're considering the sad loader a total loss. We're waiting to hear back from Garma on that. So while expenses look like they have decreased as of the printing of this budget, I'm not sure that that will actually be the case as we go through the year depending on how we're going to repair those two pieces of equipment, because of course, anything that solid waste buys or needs to repair is very expensive. So we will stay tuned there. Director's budget increased two hundred and twenty-three thousand six dollars. The biggest increase there is a collection software program. As y'all know, I, I find it just maddening that we have a ten million dollar enterprise fund that doesn't have collection software. So we're going to remedy that. It's budgeted at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. There is an expense to that, but I think that will help. The guys are actually out in the field trying to collect garbage and recycling. Our residential division has increased seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Commercial expenses have decreased two hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven. Deep dive into our fuel usage has really helped commercial figure out whether or not they need that budgeted money. And then also their debt service has lowered, they've paid off a few things, so that's why that big decrease there. The transfer station expenses are up ninety-one thousand thirty dollars. The CND landfill expenses are projected to decrease a hundred and seventy-five thousand eight forty-five. Closed landfill expenses are down five thousand dollars, and yard waste expenses have increased eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The capital request for solid waste this year is the wheel loader for the transfer station at three hundred and forty thousand, and that camera system, Third Eye, is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty. So their total capital request, again as of today, is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Last year was at five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, so right in line with what they requested last year as well. The airport, their total operating revenue for the current airport is one million one hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. That does not include transfers. So Spalding County's portion of that operations is five hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-two, with their debt service at three hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and nine. The transfer from the general fund for the city is seven hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-two. That is a large increase from last year at four hundred and eighty-one thousand ten, and then FY twenty-four was five hundred and seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Their total expenses, again, this is for new and current airport, is twenty-six million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. Comparing that to last year, it was one million six hundred and eighty-two thousand sixty-five dollars. But if you look at the bottom line, twenty-four million is associated with the new airport. Twenty-three million seven hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars will be covered by the grant. So there's four hundred and fifty thousand eight fifty-eight left, which is split fifty-fifty between the city and the county. So the total for us is two hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So the fuel for resale that they will have at the current airport, that revenue is projected at two ninety, or excuse me, expense is projected at two hundred and ninety-eight thousand forty dollars. Last year it was a little less than that at two hundred and ninety-one thousand four hundred and fifty. You can see the breakdown between ab gas and jet A below that. Telecom's total revenue this year is at one million two hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety. And fiscal year twenty-five is at one million one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-one. Their operating revenue has increased twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, where last year it increased a hundred and twenty-nine thousand twenty. So from that operating revenue, they're receiving six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars in fiber leases, and then four hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars in internal service charges. Both of that is about the same as what they had in fiscal year twenty-five. Their expenses have increased, their expenses total one million three hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, which is an increase of fifty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven. Capital this year is the fiber network expansion at a hundred thousand dollars. The golf course, their operating revenue this year is also expected to increase by seventeen point five eight percent at eight hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars compared to seven hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars last year. So over a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase in revenue there. And their expenses are up though, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and forty-three, which total one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So we are still having to transfer money to our amenity of the golf course at five hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and eighty. It's a little bit less than last year's five hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one. Motor pool, another internal service fund for us, their revenue is at one million four hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Last year's revenue was projected at one million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Their expenses this year are projected at one million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars compared to last year's one million five hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Capital total this year is sixty thousand dollars for a variation tire balancer at twenty-five thousand, and an alignment machine at thirty-five thousand. They did not have any capital last year that was budgeted, so they require a transfer of two hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars compared to last year's transfer of two hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. Main Street is a little different this year. Their total program is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand seventy-nine dollars compared to last year's two hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's because we removed the allocation from economic development. And it used to be that we split out economic developments payments to Main Street and DDA. All that is, is moving money on paper and requiring transfers that really we don't need to do, so we're trying to simplify things. And so there's really not a decrease there. It actually increased, if you're looking at just things specific to Main Street, by thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. We do have revenue budgeted for thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which increased a little bit from the twenty-six six from last year. Sixteen thousand six hundred dollars of that is from GSPTA, ten thousand dollars for advertising, and sixty-six hundred dollars for sponsorships. And then we also have a ten thousand dollar corporate sponsorship, the Second Saturdays.
I want to go back a little bit. A few years ago, we could trackers on all of our vehicles.
Most of them.
Most of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what is the status of that?
In what regard?
Do we still have them?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. What was it, most of service, service vehicles, what was it?
Most everything that's going to be out. So like our, our explore in the city manager's office, we don't hardly drive that ever, so we don't pay for it to be, for it to have GPS, because it sits in the parking deck for the most part. So it depends on vehicle, but most everything that is out and about all day long is going to have GPS on it.
Okay.
That is actually, just so you know, that's something that we're auditing right now, because as we surplus cars, or they get moved down to divisions or something like that, we need to make sure that we have a policy as to when a car has GPS and when it does not. So that's something the directors and I have been talking about for the last couple of weeks.
I talked about it later.
Okay. The downtown development authority budget this year is four hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars compared to last year at five hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and forty-one. Again, that removed that ninety-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollar allocation from economic development. So the main thing that they have is a four hundred thousand dollar capital request. That is for building purchases, rehabs, and resales. That money comes from TAD ONE, which is our tax allocation district downtown. Hotel motel tax this year, we have budgeted an increase of twenty thousand dollars. So total revenue at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars compared to last year's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The breakdown is eighteen point seven five percent to Historic City Hall, which equates to thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. The Griffin Spalding Business and Tourism Association, as our destination marketing organization, receives forty-three point seven five percent of our hotel motel tax. So that's seventy-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the general fund is able to keep thirty-seven point five percent of hotel motel tax, which equates to sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty. So all of that is increasing every year, which is a great thing. And then lastly, our special revenue funds. We have our CDBG, which is budgeted at one million six hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. So a million of that is grant. Six hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and fifteen is local. Court tech revenue is budgeted at twenty thousand dollars. They expect to expend seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and then reserve two thousand one hundred and thirty. Our T-Splash revenue is budgeted at three million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. We will transfer three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in from the general fund to L-MIG, which is our paving. So that total expense will be four million forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Compared to last year, CDBG was at one million five hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Court tech was budgeted at twenty-five thousand dollars, and then T-Splash, we always have a budget of three million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And that is it.
Outstanding. Questions from any board members?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Where's anything about our splash pads that we've been talking about for the past year? I don't see anything budgeted.
No, sir, there isn't anything budgeted for splash pads, because what we decided was we needed to look at the pool first. So at the commission objectives, we talked about the pool and having an idea and what we were going to do that, with that by the end of the fiscal year. Because the city and our service delivery strategy is not parks and rec. So if we want to make decisions to have splash pads throughout the community, we need to start talking about service delivery again. If we want to do something at the pool, we need to make that decision, because the last quote we had there was three point five million dollars from 2023. So I don't think we want to figure out to put splash pads everywhere and then leave the pool the way it is. So I think that's the first question, and then we need to go from there.
I was contacted by one of the county commissioners and wanted to know if we wanted to join in with them to make a bigger splash pad at City Park. And they were talking about drilling for a well so it wouldn't be water expense. Have you heard anything about that?
Yes, Dr. LeBetter met with myself, with Ms. Trammell, with Ms. Eller. I think, Mr. Endo, name? And that's been a few months. I asked him to give me a formal proposal, and I haven't received anything since then. But I, I wouldn't recommend drilling for water when we have, we have water. So we would provide that free of charge, was the conversation we had.
Still have to pay for it out of our budget. It would still cost us money instead of to recycle, recirculate, instead of just having, letting them drill a well and letting them.
There's already a well drilled out of City Park.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it be cheaper to run it off a well than supplying water? I'm just curious on that.
Probably not, just the electrical charges and then what you have to do to maintain wells and... I don't, I, I would not recommend using well water for water activity, recreational purposes. I think we can control it much better with our, our treated water. But that, I mean, all of that is, is something that we are discussing, but I, I don't think it is fiscally responsible to go build more splash pads and leave the pool in the condition that it's in. So that's, in my opinion, the first thing that needs to be decided. That is something that staff is looking at now. But we said throughout our goals workshops that we would have a recommendation by the end of this year as to what to do. So I...
End of this budget year or end of this fiscal year?
End of the calendar year.
The fiscal year?
Calendar year, so by the end of December.
And our, our board's next semi-annual discussion retreat is going to be July twenty-second.
Yes, sir.
Where we'll reflect back on what we discussed in January and then moving forward as well. So on public safety, on the fire department, I saw, I can't find it, but I saw where you had, we had fire stations, land and all that stuff. Also, you mentioned that tornado sirens, when, when we discussed that.
So that is...
We've got a grant applied for that.
Yeah, we have applied for a grant for the tornado sirens. And the fire station land acquisition and, and station builds, we can discuss. We plan on doing that in July.
Okay.
There's actually fire equipment on the agenda for June tenth to go ahead and make those purchases. And then, because that'll be at the least twenty-four months out. But we're going to go ahead and approve those quotes with something, so you'll see that the next meeting. And then the land stuff, we'll, we need to talk about how we want to situate three and four.
Okay, perfect.
But yes, they were removed from the budget.
Okay, excellent.
I guess I did have a question. This is going back to the water wastewater. What phase were we in for where we did all the fog and those tests? Did we find any significant problems or any expenses that just aren't on here yet? Or is that for leak, or for the detection?
Oh, yeah.
Potato Creek.
Yes, actually, we have the last phase of that, I think, happening, well, depending on the weather, it can't rain. So probably not this week, that was planned. So maybe next week that we'll do that, and then we'll have to make a decision on how we want to move forward there. But yeah, there will have to be some work done.
So that go towards the capital improvement or?
It's not listed in here currently, because we, we don't even have an idea of how to budget that yet. So you'll see it coming, but we don't know yet.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent job team.
Job, thank you.
And hopefully we'll have a seamless process moving forward over the next couple of meetings. And tonight we'll have a public hearing for taking citizens' comments.
We'll have a public hearing tonight at six and on the tenth at six.
Perfect, wonderful, thank you so much. Before going to executive session, do we have any other comments or any questions? So item two is considered an executive session pursuant to OCGA Section 501421 for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. Do we have motion to go into executive session? Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ward with a second. All in favor, please raise your hand and join us in the room. Thank you all for being here today.
God, it's cold in here. Freezing, freezing. See, I'm always prepared. I think it's like, I've got your, after devotional now. So I keep my prayer here now, be prepared for you. You don't show up, Mister, I don't show up.
Recording stopped, recording in progress.
Good morning. Do we have motion to adjourn?
I will.
Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. Board Murray, all favor.